Everybody ready? Call this meeting to order. You'll all rise. Pastor Alex McAfee will give us our prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, everybody. If you would bow your heads and pray with me this morning. Heavenly Father, we just come to you today with joy in our hearts for all that you are doing in each and every one of us, however you are moving in our towns and in our county. Your Word states in James 1:5, "If you need wisdom, ask our generous God, and he will give it to you." We ask this morning for your wisdom for the board and the decisions that will be made today. May they benefit all of your children in our county, young and old. Father, we just thank you for all that you are doing, for all that you plan to do, for we know that you have a plan, and that plan is to give us a hope and a future. And Father, I just lift up everybody on this board this morning and all those in this room, everybody in our cities and towns, our county, and our state, and our government. May you just guide us on the steps that you want us to take. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on March 15, 2021 at 9:00 a.m.?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Committee or legislative report. Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I spoke with Regina Cobb this morning. Let everybody know that the water bills in question that failed to get a House hearing there, she's still working on those down there. There's some other options. Can't say much besides that, but she's still working on those. The state's also going to be starting to work on their budget this week, so we'll follow that closely. Had a good meeting of the, on the Walpai Tribe Settlement last week with all the parties. Went very well. Manager Elters and I are going to be going up to meet with them and their leadership this Friday to talk about local issues and the water settlement is be one of those things that we talk about. That's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today.
Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you. I attended the County Supervisors Association Executive Committee meeting, also the medium county caucus and the Board of Directors meeting, and then I also attended a Downwinders meeting telephonically.
Supervisor Angus.
Good morning. I attended the CSA meeting, also in the LPC, the Legislative Policy, where we talk about the bills that the legislature is discussing, and we talk about it and see if it's something that we want to support. There's a lot of bills still pending. I spoke about the Second Amendment Sanctuary State, that's Leo Biassucci's bill, and that went through the House and it's in the Senate, and that's looking good. So if you still want to support it, go ahead. There's a lot of election bills still whirling around there, and so as soon as I hear something more definitive, I will come back and let you guys know. Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager Elters.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. Just one item. We continue to monitor the impact of COVID-19. We continue to monitor the impact of COVID-19, the exposure of our employees, and to see improvements, substantial improvements. And just for example, in the month of December, we had 30 employees that tested positive and had to be away. In January, we had 21, forgive me, 28 in January and four in the month of February. So we're definitely looking a lot better. Our employees are working really hard to take all the necessary measures to protect themselves and minimize the impact to the county and to them doing their job. So I hope that continues. Just wanted to make you aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to call to the public. Madam Clerk, do you have some to read?
Chairman Johnson, I have three to read today. The first one was submitted by Bob Valentine from Lake Havasu. It reads, "I wanted to bring it to your attention that the assessor is undermining your ability to lower taxes for residents than in most areas. Really seeing the value of your home raise isn't a bad thing. However, Ms. Kinch is overstepping her legal authority by increasing property values over the legal amount. I will be appealing." The second one is from B. Wilson from Behead City. Instead of ridiculing others for trying to help stop a global pandemic, maybe this board can put its money where its mouth is. I'm hearing cares was spent on a court remodel and body cameras. What does that have to do with helping out your constituents during one of the worst public health crises of our generation? Not a dime went to helping small businesses. I think we need a public audit of this county's cares funding. Final submission was from Melissa Wolf, and she writes, "At the last BOs meeting, Supervisor Gould implied that he wants to make voting more difficult because he didn't like the fact that Arizonans chose Biden over Trump. He and Supervisor Angus and Lingefelter voted against allowing voters in the upcoming Hackberry School District recall election the option of emergency voting because they fear it will be used in some sinister way. Supervisor Lingefelter promoted the debunked conspiracy theory that somehow dead people voted in the 2020 election, and he stated that voting is a privilege when it is a right under the Constitution. Mr. Tempert is trying to modernize and ensure the voters here have every opportunity to vote in free, fair, and honest elections. The upgrades he is proposing should allay Supervisor's fears of sinister intentions. Supervisors Gould, Angus, and Lingefelter should misinformation and distrust campaign and vote to support our democracy."
Thank you. Ken Works.
Ken Works, Yaca, Arizona. Was at the last planning and zoning meeting. Commissioner Gillette called for discussion on handshake contracts are causing problems. Chairman Morris said that the judges should be concerned about that. It's enough said. The types of easements are private that are adjudicated, BLM easements, US Forest Service land, state land, county land, city land, and more. Where's the contract info stored? BLM, I was asking for easement information to provide an easement for extension of our easements that are deeded to us going across BLM land. And he was, he told me at the beginning of the conversation, it'd be about $11 an acre for rent, and at the end of the conversation, it was more like $15 per acre for rent. I was just wondering, so who's receiving the rent now that the property has changed hands? Where's the easement enforcement? With utility, utility easements, access to the Franconi overpass is dangerous right now at this point. One of the owners, property owners, has blocked it off and is setting up booby traps around the edges, so it makes it dangerous to go around it. And one of his neighbors is calling on completely fencing off the private land, not allowing any, anyone to ingress or egress the BLM land surrounding that with a five-wire fence, regardless of what neighbors, the other neighbors might desire, and exceeding his property line also by preventing through traffic, blocking off whatever path people are making to go around the blockades. Santa Fe Ranch Property Owners Association, 60-foot easement between each parcel. It's between each of these little squares. 60-foot easement, so where's the liability? Am I responsible for Grandma and Grandpa meeting head-on when they're side by side with the future motocross champions who winds up in their lap? 100-foot easement on the section line roads. Not on Shattalainic Jean Autry Road. The telephone poles are two feet into the easement. Thank you very much.
Joy Bancroft.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Board of Supervisors. My name is Joy Bancroft. I live on Linden in Topak Golden Shores. As you may recall, I have been here before many times, speaking with you about my passion to address Golden Shores and our nuisance dilapidated properties. Most of my effort was concentrating on those eyesores created by drug squatters who collect motorhomes, junk, and trash, and dump on the properties. However, with the help of code enforcement and the Sheriff's Department, we have made amazing progress. But today I come to you with two issues. First, with the growing upswing in property sales, new construction, and grading of lots in Golden Shores, it brings me to, how do we address these abandoned dwellings? We're talking 20 to 30 dwellings sitting deteriorating for 10 to 20 years. Most of these places have deceased owners and have been vacant for years and years. They have weeds growing up around the structures. They have broken doors and windows and are used for dumping grounds for old vehicles. It's exactly what we would have seen in Agenda Item on your Agenda Day. Parcels look like that all over our town. We need to find a way to speed up this process and either get a responsible parties to take ownership of, or the county to get more active. These parcels could be easily sold if they were appealing to buy. We have the nuisance ordinance. Let's escalate the process. Even with tax liens and prospective buyers out there, it's not appealing due to the expense to demolish them. This is just not in Golden Shores. It's all over rural communities as well. This creates revenue. It's a win-win for everybody. And for my second issue, help me get the answer as to who takes the lead to remove druggies living in motorhomes on residential properties. This is not a criticism, but the Sheriff's Department says it's a code enforcement issue, and code enforcement gets these places cleaned up from the bad element, only to leave behind the druggies living in motorhomes. So I guess tell me, what entity or jurisdiction can get us the answer or get this, these displaced druggies out of these motorhomes living in our community? So, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Chris Rodardi.
Chris Rodardi, Kingman. On January 4, 2021, at the Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting, Health Director Denise Burley said, "Long-term care facilities and skilled nursing care facilities are still very low contributors to COVID cases in our county." Today I bring you a story of Mary, 88 years old, a resident in a memory care facility in Mojave County. Day after day, she sits alone in her room, wondering why her family isn't coming, why the holidays came and went without a visit from her daughter, why she can't hug her grandson. Mary feels abandoned, what she wouldn't give for a simple hug from her daughter. But because of lockdowns, Mary and her family are forbidden to spend precious time together in these, her final days. Sadly, she withers away in loneliness and confusion because of a cruel decision to quarantine her. And why? We just heard how long-term care facilities are not a problem. Of course, people in her age group are more susceptible to the Wuhan flu. Of course, precautions must be taken to protect their health. But is keeping them isolated, even imprisoned, away from loved ones a moral solution? These lockdowns are insidious, nonsensical, and just plain evil. Some provisions must and can be made for visiting loved ones in nursing homes, and at the same time, keep infection rates low. There are actions the Health Department could and must take. Every two weeks, I sit through Denise Burley's COVID report and never hear any mention of her plan to solve this problem. I've never heard an acknowledgement that this even is a problem. She herself said facility cases are low. Good news, a great time to welcome families back while maintaining COVID protocols, yet nothing gets done. So tragically, family members remain unable to hold a mother's hand, hug their aunt, or share a story, a laugh, a smile. Separating families is all part of the globalist agenda to destroy America. And if we continue begging for permission from unelected bureaucrats to return our God-given rights, we will never get our rights back. You must fix this now, Mojave County representatives. Make the compassionate, moral, humane decision before one more beautiful aging soul dies neglected and alone. God is watching and will not hold us guiltless.
Stephen Tumminello.
My name is Stephen Tumminello. I'm a resident of Lake Havasu City in Mojave County. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, the Great American Patriots Organization, and Sheriff Richard Mack, founder of the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. We recently received requests for Sheriff Mack to be interviewed by one of the most prominent newspapers in Berlin, Germany, as well as the Voice of America that reaches over 40 countries and over 240 million people around the world. On February 6, Sheriff Mack appeared with Sheriff Joe Arpaio here in Mojave County at the Great American Pizza Restaurant for a Freedom Rally. We had two legendary sheriffs in our county supporting and promoting our freedom movement. This coming weekend, Sheriff Mack will be appearing again in Golden Valley at Great American Pizza, and on Sunday, March 7, in Lake Havasu, where he will be meeting with business owners that are not willing to accept any more illegal and unconstitutional orders from the governor, and then a Freedom Rally to the general public starting at noon. Our Sheriff Doug Schuster is aware of these events this weekend and is supportive of his constituents seeking to live in a county that adheres to the supreme law of the land, the United States Constitution. We know that we're fortunate to have a constitutional sheriff, and we expect him to stand up for us as per the Constitution. The reason I'm stating all of this is that I was told that Supervisor Jean Bishop has on more than one occasion referred to the patriots in Lake Havasu as being a fringe group. Sheriff Joe Arpaio and Sheriff Richard Mack do not support and endorse fringe groups. In fact, we've been attracting so much attention that we have states all around the country that want to take their country back at the grassroots level, county by county, because of our example. So if this is what you consider a fringe group, Mrs. Bishop, then all I can say is that you may be the domestic enemy our forefathers warned us about. Mrs. Bishop, on Monday, July 13, you removed a man from the People's County Administration Building here because he would not wear a face covering and stated that it was his constitutional right to be in the administration building. You base this on your consultation with Deputy County Attorney Ryan Esplin, who's being considered for a raise today. I think he stated that the Constitution did not apply in this particular situation. As you can see, that many of us are not wearing face masks today, so the Constitution does apply. An article that I found on December 22, 2020, Attorney Esplin made a statement regarding the Resolution 1776 and the petition to make Mojave County a constitutional sanctuary county, and I quote Mr. Esplin. He said, "I don't think it's something you, the board, should be doing because it is sending the wrong message," as if for the last nine months, the legislature, the governor, the people that are representing this have been doing something wrong. I discovered these two articles when trying to see what Mr. Esplin's face looks like since he conceals his identity.
Karen Vanderjack.
Sheriff Mack will be happy to conduct a train with Mr. Esplin. Thank you very much on the Constitution. Thank you.
You will honor your time, or you won't be allowed to speak again.
I'm Karen Vanderjack, Lake Havasu City. I am a citizen. By the way, the definition of a citizen is a co-leader. I'm exasperated and I'm frustrated with the roadblocks to release health clubs that require masks to work out, and restaurants and events like the Renaissance Fair requiring masks with threats of losing their liquor license. How about the corporate companies that do not even allow for the governor's exemption 2020-43? So set on following mask rules that they put store policy above the US Constitution. And in my case, the Sees Candy, they resorted to calling the police. Well, let's go back to the Mojave County 2021-017, and I quote, "The importance to interpose for the arresting, the progress of evil, for maintaining within their respective limits and the authority, rights, and liberties obtained to them." Now, how is this not evil? Mojave County is giving tacit consent. They're giving their seal of approval to clear violations of our liberties. According to the 1964 Civil Rights Act, it clearly states equal access to all. This is discrimination. Our Constitution has no emergency clause, which allows liberties to be taken away due to emergencies or pandemics. Okay, I was actually going to talk to you about the CDC today and how egregious they are, and how many mistakes they have done, and how many people they've killed over the years, but I was, I got very concerned when I heard that this lawyer over here, Mr. Epstein, I'm sorry, Epsin, anyway, I had concerns about his, this, so I need to address it because I was shocked that he was going to get a raise. I'd been hoping for a complete replacement with a constitutional lawyer. Now, here's the difference, if you don't know what the difference is. A bar attorney is loyal to the court and is accountable only to the bar, and he's not licensed. It's a certification by the bar. A constitutional lawyer is able to interpret the Constitution, not based on case laws as Mr. Esplin does, but based on the original intent of the founding fathers. Please, do your homework before this travesty continues. Maybe Supervisor Lingefelter, I'm sorry, could you talk to that professor of the, of the Constitution and confirm what I'm saying today? So whatever is on the agenda today, really, your agenda, I'd really like to tear this in half. Nothing is more important right now than maintaining our liberties, and if you guys don't feel that way, then you have the wrong job.
Thank you. First thing we have is a proclamation. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Have a second.
Say.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tara Acton, our procurement director, is she here?
Hello.
Morning.
I'm assuming I'm up here for the presentation of our AEP award.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I actually brought it, and then I left it back there, but I will have it for a photo opportunity afterwards. So first of all, thank you, Chairman Johnson and supervisors, for allowing me to make the presentation and to share a little bit of information about this award and the procurement department in Mojave County. It is not an award that is new to the county, so I'm sure that you're likely aware that the National Procurement Institute has been recognizing exemplary public procurement departments since 1995. The award was developed to encourage and recognize the continued professionalism, innovation, productivity, and leadership of excellent procurement organizations. Mojave County first submitted their application for this award in 2005. Out of the 16 submittals that we've made, we've received the award 15 times. This year, Mojave County represents one of only 10 agencies to receive the award in the state and one of only two counties. The AEP award measures the successes and contributions of the procurement department from January 1 of 2020 through the submittal of the application. I personally take no credit for the award this year. Mojave County received this award, and I would like the board to recognize the efforts and the successes of our prior director, Becky O'Brien, who retired in April, and of course, the amazing team for all that they've done to ensure that the county would remain a nationally recognized organization for our commitment to procurement best practices. I'd also like to offer a special thank you to our procurement supervisor, Michelle Fink, for her leadership during transitional times and pretty stressful times, to Morgan Michaels, Procurement Officer Senior, Selena Leon, Procurement Officer, Marisol Mejia, Office Specialist, and Curtis Shelton, our warehouse technician, for their dedication, team approach, and hard work. This is a wonderful team, and they are watching the meeting from our office right now. I will be requesting a photo opportunity with the board at the end of this meeting. And again, I want to thank you for your support and the opportunity to highlight the successes of Mojave County's amazing department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our consent, items 5 through 27. Anyone have anything they want to be pulled off? Supervisor Angus.
Nothing this morning, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop.
Nothing this morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, number 13 and number 17.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent, items 5 through 27, minus 13 and 17.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 13, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to shed a little light on this issue. These are the two vehicles that were set on fire by the arson in the parking lot of the county building in Lake Havasu. I just want the taxpayers to know that this kind of behavior is going to cost them over $100,000 for really no reason. I don't believe the individual had a problem with the assessor's office. I think it was just random. The individual that's been accused of this lit several fires around Lake Havasu City during that time. I move that item 13 be adopted.
Second.
Motion and second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 17, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is for stab-resistant body armor for the corrections officers. And the only question I had is, are they wearing this type of body armor now? Believe the detention officers, not corrections officers, though.
Good morning, Supervisor Gould. To answer your question, no, they're not. This is a new program. The jail has never had stab-resistant body armor for any of its staff. Those that, excuse me, those that are weapon-qualified have ballistic armor, but this provides stab-resistant armor to all detention officers.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that item 17 be adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go on to the public hearings. I'll open the public hearing, item number 28, discussing possible action, prove the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-25. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure, the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 29, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board, item number 29? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make recommend, motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-026.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 30, I'll open the public hearing, Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-28. Anyone from the public who wish to address the board? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that item 30 be adopted.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second for a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 31, I'll open the public hearing, Resolution 2021-029. Anyone from the public who wish to address the board on item number 31? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move that item 31 be adopted.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 32, I'll open the public hearing, Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-032. Anyone from the public who wish to address the board? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. I have a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lingenfelt?
If I may ask somebody from Development Services to come to the podium, I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Morning, Scott.
Morning.
Just wanted to confirm a couple of things with you. I've got an attachment A that was in the backup that shows current billboards and the two proposed billboards. Can you tell me off the top of your head, how far apart do billboards have to be in our current code?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, in our current ordinance, billboards would have to be at least 500 feet between each of, each billboard. You couldn't get one closer than 500 feet.
And it shows that there's five current billboards. It looks like less than a half a mile or maybe even less than that.
Yeah, that is correct. It looks like a lot of them are around that, that truck stop there, that little corridor as you're going up.
Sure. And I, I did review the commission meeting and, you know, it looks like the applicant did check off all of the boxes that are required and, and staff is required to be completely objective, but clearly the area residents up there that we have heard from believe that there may be an oversaturation with these additional two. So I'm going to make a motion that item 32 is denied. Thank you.
Second.
That was for denial?
Denial, sir.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing, file number 33, Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-02. Have anybody from the public who wish to address the board? Saying none, I will close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
I move that item 33 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Going on to our regular agenda, item number 34, discussion possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-01. We have a discussion. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Supervisor Angus, seconded it.
Did you? I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Going on to our regular agenda, item number 34, discussion possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-01. We have a discussion. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Supervisor Angus, seconded it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 35, discussing possible action, approve the letter from Mojave County Board of Supervisors to be submitted to the Arizona, the Director of Arizona Department of Economic Security, request the director for response as to the steps the department has taken, will take to identify and reject filing of fraudulent unemployment claims involving Mojave County and to provide a credit for the fraudulent claims paid by the county since the passage of the CARES Act. Mr. Espeland?
So with this item, we were asking the board to authorize us to send a letter to be signed by the chairman. Here's the problem. Starting back from October of 2020 to the beginning of February 2021, we've had 104 fraudulent unemployment claims. The way it works is somebody submits an application for unemployment. The department then reviews it to determine if the person is eligible, the department approves it, the department begins paying, and then that, then that money, and then, and then the department notifies us that they've approved an application, at which point we reimburse the department. The problem is that those 104 are fraudulent claims. So these are people that have submitted claims, 63 of those never worked for Mojave County, but then 41 of those claims, they're using the identities of Mojave County employees. So they will say Ryan Espeland with my social security number and submit the claim to the Department of Economic Security for unemployment benefits, start to receive benefits until we can notify them that, hey, that Ryan Espeland still works for Mojave County and he did not submit that claim. So we're asking for action to notify the department that this needs to stop, and what, we're asking what actions are you going to take to stop it? We're very concerned about it. The departments are concerned, employees are concerned, the county attorney's office is concerned. I imagine you also share those concerns. So we're asking to put them on notice to say, hey, this has got to stop, and what are you going to do about it?
Any questions to Mr. Espeland? Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. The process is, so I, I submit my claim to the state first, the state sees it first, without contacting you again to make sure that this is legitimate. They just do that and then they contact you, they notify you after the fact?
That's correct. The bill then comes to us, we get a quarterly bill, at which point we then pay the bill.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's the normal practice. There's two different ways that employers can pay for unemployment benefits. It can be by percentage, which most businesses do. I imagine you probably are aware of that. Businesses pay that unemployment percentage. But then the other one is usually counties, cities, government entities. What they'll do is they will, people will submit their claims and then that bill comes later for reimbursement. The, the county then reimburses after the fact.
It seems that there's kind of a simple solution if they just, you know, keep the counties or whatever government agency in the loop first. Wouldn't that be a kind of a simple solution to this?
Yes.
So you'd know right away, I mean, that, you know, you're still working and that you're not putting in for unemployment.
Correct. And, and we've, we've, we've asked that in the letter, to notify us first.
Okay, yeah. And so this, this, is the state sort of saying they don't want to change, or are we, we're ultimately going to be responsible? Are they going to go after these people? I mean, do you know anything else than, you know, what the problem is?
From what I understand, they have investigators that are looking into it, but your guess is as good as mine.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Chairman, if I may?
Supervisor Lingenfelt?
You know, in private company, you know, if they get a claim, they'll send you a letter to say, this individual has submitted a claim, and then you have an opportunity to either agree with it or refute it. And that you're saying that that doesn't happen with, with the county? They, they don't send a letter to our HR department saying, hey, this person has submitted a letter claiming unemployment, and we don't get the opportunity to verify that or not?
No, we do. We, we still do. I, I guess I'm kind of confusing things, and I apologize. I'm just kind of talking about how, how unemployment benefits are paid from businesses versus, versus county governments and city government. We, we pay, we, we pay those claims after the fact rather than a percentage like a tax that comes out of the business. So that's, that's what I was explaining with that part. But no, we still have an opportunity to refute it, and each time we get this, each time we get it, we notify them immediately saying, this is a fraudulent claim, stop it. And then they'll cease, but it's too late at this point.
So they pay before they receive our response refuting?
Right.
Got it. Thanks.
And, and I mean, and just so you're, so we're clear, I mean, we've, we have instances where we've contested unemployment claims, just in the normal sense, an employee is terminated and we disagree on the circumstances of the termination, and we've appealed that. I've, I've participated in that before. This is different. This is a fraudulent claim. This is someone saying, Ryan Espeland, social security number, he's, he's no longer employed and taking the money.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, are they targeting county government because of the fact that they, the state starts paying before verification with the county?
I, I, I imagine, you know, I don't know the mind of the criminal, but I, it's an easy target, right? I mean, it's a quick, easy money, and, and I think that that's probably why they're targeting cities, counties, towns. I mean, this is all across the entire state. It's not just Mojave County. It's Maricopa County and towns and cities and all over, all over Arizona. So I imagine that's probably why they're doing it, because it's a quick, quick grab of money.
So this was the normal process. It, it isn't some kind of expedited process for the CARES Act?
I, I don't know. I'd have to defer to HR on that question. It could very well be, I mean, part of the problem is that, you know, typically they, they process so many claims. Well, when the CARES Act happened, the, the, the claims just exploded.
Sure.
Absolutely exploded. And so I don't know if it was a process of they just decided, you know what, we're just going to, we're going to grant things because there's just so many and we want to make sure we get it out there. So it could very well be that they're taking advantage of the CARES Act. That may very well may be the case, but I would have to defer to HRS to the actual process of how they do it on a regular basis.
It also raises the possibility that if they've created some expedited process, this might be happening to private employers also.
That's true.
If they're, if they're going ahead and paying claims without the verifi, without waiting for verification.
Absolutely. And that, that very well, very well may be the case. I just don't know because I don't handle private businesses.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You want to hear from HR? You want to hear from HR?
Yeah, for sure.
Good morning, supervisors. This is Leanne Lewis. She's our HR assistant who processes all these claims, so I'd like for her, if it's all right with the board, go through what her process is.
Good morning, Chairman and supervisors. So what the process is for us is we receive notices to employers. So we get these notices that come in, and like Attorney Espeland said, it will have a name on it and a social security number, and it is asking if they are still employed with us when their last day was, and we do a response back. So in the case of what we're seeing, the influx has been since October, and there's been many current employees that we get that same notice that we verify their social security number on it. I let the employee know, and we also respond back to DES. So the notices that we're paying on, those are quarterly. So even if we're responding back within the next day, which normally is 24 hours, they may not be, be caught up in their system. I've been told multiple times, they're behind thousands and thousands of claims. It's just, it's kind of a hit or miss, and unfortunately, we have been seeing them on our quarterlies of active employees, which is where all this came to be.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you, you're paying the claims quarterly?
Finance pays the claims quarterly, but we do review them to review the employees that are on there.
So we're a quarter in the rear. They're, they're already paying the benefits? The state is fronting the money to pay the benefits to the person?
That's my understanding of it, yes, sir.
Do you have any idea whether this happens in the private sector also?
I haven't heard, truth be told. It's just seems to be statewide rampant. It's just with us being on board with other counties and everybody corresponding to verify where they're at in the system, that's how we know where it is on public entities, government entities.
Do we know if the employee's social security information has been, this, this was available from a data breach that previously happened?
That we are still trying to find out. No one seems to have a direct answer for that, unfortunately. Unemployment themselves are referring to, that's what they think it is, it's from a data breach. The state doesn't think that it's on them. My feelings are, being the entity that we are and all of our information is public record, it's quite easy to go, this is so-and-so, this is their name, this is what they make, we can find their social.
Sounds logical. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Two things that I have on this. First one is, I don't know how the board feels, but I think we should be giving our employees that security or whatever it is, to watch their financial records to make sure that, you know, besides this breach, they don't start getting hacked into, into more things. I think, because obviously I think it, it has come from some kind of a breach of government records, because we have elected officials along with employees, you know, that have gotten hit real bad. So I think we could make a motion if, if people want to do that. Supervisor Angus?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to tell you that we had our pre-meeting for EBT, and that's on the table to add to the benefits for our employees is, what do they call it?
Identity theft?
Identity.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
When is your meeting, Supervisor Angus?
Meeting's next, the 11th.
Oh, okay.
March 11th.
That would probably, if it does let us know, and if not, then the board could take some action.
Yeah.
Thank you. The second one would be checking around the state. The state is not being responsive, responsive to any of the counties or cities or state agencies that have been hit. I have no problem if the board would, we just file, file a lawsuit against them to get their attention and see if we can get something handled, because right now you can call them, they won't answer the phone for the, for the public, they won't get back with you. They're pretty much ignoring everybody. I don't know if the board would want to do that, you know, just to see if we can get some attention.
Supervisor Johnson, do you think maybe a good avenue were to go through CSA if, if all the counties are being affected? Maybe we can do it as a, a group, go after the state or make some kind of noise?
If, if CSA would do it, then you got to get all 15 counties to agree.
Do you, would you like to talk to them? You're the...
Yes, as the president-elect of the Executive Board, I'd be, yeah, I'd be happy to talk to Craig Sullivan and see what we can come together statewide. Thank you. That's all.
All right. So I guess there's no other action needed.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
I just wanted to comment that our employees have the ability now to lock their credit with the three credit reporting agencies. You can, you can individually lock and unlock your own credit. You don't necessarily have to pay a service to do it, and that is available if you go on their website. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the letter?
Supervisor Johnson, I make a motion that we approve the letter to...
Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second for a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 36, discussing possible action, ratify and approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Department of Economic Security and Mojave County contract D121-002311. Any discussion on this item? Have a motion.
Chairman Johnson, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second? We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion.
Before vote, would you be kind enough to allow Director Smith to bring the board up to speed as to where we're at on that? Just for your information?
Go ahead and take the chance that we'll vote against it now?
I would hope not.
Go right ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, members of the board. Just want to bring you up to speed. In regards to the program, we do have staff in our offices ready to go now to help with facilitating the program, to make sure all the members of the county receive services, no matter what it may be. If they have a disability, we will help with that. They're welcome in our office. We have started doing that. In regards to the intergovernmental agency agreement as well, with that being said, we are going to hire two full-time people that have been budgeted. And as soon as we conclude the meeting, we'll post that. It'll be 10 days. After those 10 days have passed, we will then move forward through the county to make sure that all parts of the county, so no matter where you're at in the county, your zip code won't dictate if you have the ability to do this. So we'll be able to provide the internet as well as the access to upload the documents for those that may not have the ability to do that. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Angus?
So it's already started. And how many inquiries have you had thus far?
Sure, wonderful. So before it started, we had about 25 people had called and inquired about it when we first started the discussions. We called those 25 people back. We explained to them the way the portal worked. Those 25 people did not need our assistance at this time. However, with that being said, as of today here in Kingman, we had nine people that signed up that did not have access to a computer or the ability to upload their documents. So we are providing that ability for them to upload their documents and be able to fly through the portal. So they're using our facility and our services, and that's something that we do on a normal basis when people are actually looking for jobs and within the county.
How about in the other cities?
We have one in Havasu, and we have one in Bullhead right now.
And you know how many people have signed up in Bullhead?
Just one person has signed up in Bullhead as it stands right now.
And as far as marketing and publicizing it, I know the city of Bullhead put an ad in the paper. You know, I've spread it on Facebook. So is there some kind of marketing plan or strategy that you're using?
Sure, yes. Thank you for that, Supervisor Angus. So with that being said, we did send out an email blast to 2,500 county residents, 2,500 of our constant contacts. Of the constant contacts, we had an open rate of about 20%. Of those 20% that actually opened the email from us, 14% of those actually went to the state website and actually looked at it. We don't know what they actually did on the website, but we could see that they did that. When the meeting concludes, we'll be sending this out to all of our contacts again as well with the update, letting people know that they get in touch with us if there's any services or things they may need in regards to the program.
And I know the cities are sort of a natural way for people to find out because a lot of them are utilities, and they know who's not, you know, have been able to pay their utilities. So is there a phone number that you can put out there now?
Sure. If you give me one second, I can look that up.
And also, while you're looking it up, my office is helping people if they need help. You know, one of the sort of things we're hearing is people don't have the resources to scan their bills and things that the department needs to make their final decision. So my office is helping people in Bullhead, as is, I believe, the city of Bullhead.
Sure. So I don't have that number, but I can definitely get that to you. But the thing that I would add, we're also going to reach out to local fire departments, police office departments, the courts. We've had some discussions with the courts already in regards to making sure that anybody's going to be, you know, in the process of being evicted, that they do know the information. So we've had those discussions and worked with other local communities, partners, to make sure that the information gets out. And we'll be continuing to do that as well.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Angus, additionally, a press release is prepared and is ready to go and will be released as soon as the board meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Number 37, I placed this on the agenda because the contract wasn't being followed. Does anybody have any questions with doing with the backup or reporting?
Chairman Johnson, do we have the most recent profit and loss report?
We have one. I believe Finance has looked at it. Finance is here. They want to give us a report on what they found. Director Lloyd, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson and board members. We did receive through, I believe, the county manager's office, a copy of the profit and loss statements for calendar year 2019 and calendar year 2020, along with a balance sheet for calendar year 2020. So in, I'll just use round numbers, but using those round numbers, for calendar year 2019, it appears that the association cleared about $1,000. So with the profit and loss statement for 2019 was a profit and loss statement for the association itself, and then also a P and L for just the fair event that occurred during the fair time period of about five days in total. Combining those two, then there's a, is what resulted in the net profit of about $1,000. The fair association itself was a loss of about $126,000, I believe, and the fair, they cleared about $127,000. In 2020, with the pandemic, the fair association was unable to actually conduct the fair and quite a few other activities. And consequently, there was a loss of about $102,000 is what the statements indicated.
I don't want to stop you there. We have two reports, and you made the statement. One of them's on the fairgrounds, and one of them is for the fair and one's for the fairgrounds. Now, when you say lost 102,000, obviously, we didn't have a fair, so we didn't lose anything, right? That's just 102,000 lost for the fair operations. All right, thank you.
Yep. So given the circumstances, that wasn't entirely unexpected, clearly. The concern that I have and would note, and also had mentioned to Mr. Woods, the fairgrounds' manager, is that the balance sheet showed a negative cash at the end of December. It wasn't a significant amount, but it was about $5,500, which meant then that they had burned through the prior fund balance that was showing in order to get to that result on the balance sheet. They also had a sales tax liability that showed up on the balance sheet of about $14,000. And I'm not sure what that is, or there was a lack of really liquid assets to draw from. In speaking to Mr. Woods about the negative cash balance, he did indicate that clearly it was a poor year in terms of being able to operate the fair and really kind of operated on a limited activity schedule otherwise, although they did participate in quite a few community events. He said that they were continuing to rent going into the future, so as of December 31st, although there was negative cash, that there were clearly some outstanding checks to clear, and that the new revenue coming in from rentals were covering that, that they had not had any insufficient operations. So that is of concern from an ongoing business venture. Mojave County has participated over the last many years in certain investments into major maintenance or asset improvements. So included in the annual budget, we provide a list to you of those activities that Mojave County has participated. And essentially, we are reimbursing the fair association for those that qualify for that. In total, over the last, I believe, six or seven years, it's about $100,000 that Mojave County's participated. More recently, in recent years, some of those activities were to purchase, reimburse the association for the steel and some wood and some entrance and exit signs. But the steel and wood was particularly for that new front entrance sign.
I have a question on that. And probably the board, at least I didn't understand it that way, but all of us have budgets for our offices, and at the end of the year, we all give money back. The fairgrounds doesn't appear to do that. The $25,000 we get seems to be just rolled over. So next year, they have 50. Next year, they have 75 and 100. I think that's something that the board needs to look at because now we have no control over how much money is being spent out there if it's just going to accrue every year. Budget time, maybe we should, that's just my thought on that. And Coral, maybe if you could, during, in the contract, we had a shall provide from the less C, a semi-annual report on the operation activities being conducted by the fairgrounds. Such report shall be provided to the Mojave County manager at the end of January and July of each year, and an annual profit and loss report of less C for all business transacted pursuant to the agreement. Such annual profit and loss reports shall be delivered to Mojave County within 90 days following the close of each fiscal year by leasee. To your knowledge, has any of that been done up until this was put in? I mean, for the last few years?
So I don't know about the operations and activities report, whether that was remitted. I think that there is, well, we clearly now have the information on the annual income statement. Our year ends fiscal year, and the information we're getting is on a calendar year. So there may be a misunderstanding or a, I don't even know if it should be a misunderstanding, but a difference in how we report and how the fairgrounds is reporting at this point in time. So I'm not sure about the activities. I do not have a list of activities. In Mr. Woods' letter to the board, it did include this past calendar year, a lot of those activities, although I'm not sure about the record-keeping for number of participants and the information like that.
But that was only after it was placed on the agenda. Mr. Altares is supposed to report it to your department. Did you have any of this information prior to this being placed on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, board members, as you noted, the lease does say a report to be submitted in July and December. I was, I joined the county in June. I did not receive anything in July. And the one that would have come in December or January is the one that was just received, Mr. Chairman. The P and L, again, in the lease, it does clearly state that the P and L would be submitted 90 days after the less C's end of fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends in June, so 90 days would put it into October. Perhaps there was a misunderstanding. I don't know that for sure, Mr. Chairman, but that's the one we just received. And I forwarded to Finance for the review and evaluation they just heard.
Thank you. You didn't find any from previous, from the previous year that had been filed with your office?
I have not.
Thank you. That's why I placed it on the agenda for discussion. Supervisor Lingefelter, did you have something?
Thank you, Chairman. Coral, you know, obviously, I think that whoever is running the fairgrounds, it has to be a self-perpetuating operation. And so when you report to us that we've got negative cash, did you say $5,500 right now?
Yes.
And the sales tax liability, I guess I'm wondering, how are they paying their current invoices? I know Mr. Woods is here. Maybe he could answer that. But I have a concern about how are they paying their invoices right now? I'd like to know.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir.
How are you doing this morning? To Supervisors Lingefelter, I'll blow y'all's eardrums out. Question, we are doing it by timing. We have very, very limited funds, and what we've reduced every liability we could possibly can. We've worked with everybody on telling them if we do owe this, making partial payments. We cannot, I'm not allowed to do any kind of revolving credit, cannot go into debt. So I am working with any creditors that I have to make partial payments until we receive or have an event where we give money and we pay off the balance. This is what we did in 2020. You just get with your creditors and you work with them. And they knew what was going on, knew that we were shut down, and that's how we did it. And right now, we do have a balance of about $3,500. We had events this weekend, and so we're building on that. Our labor pool is next to nothing.
Thank you.
I would have a question. How did you lose $107,000 last year if you have no labor costs and you're just doing events? Shouldn't the events you're doing at least break even?
They do to a certain extent, but as the bookkeeper, the way the bookkeeping's done, they take account the loss of the Home and Garden Show, Fourth of July, and the county fair, and write that in as our loss. You brought up the point a while ago very well that it's sort of a push. You know, if you don't have the fair, then you don't have the expenses of the fair. So, but the way it's reported is as a usual loss of not having those events.
Your bookkeeper is just, I mean, to me, I thought when you did your books, you had an event and you had a win or lose. But if next year, you don't have that event, your bookkeeper's putting that down as a loss. So that $107,000 you lost weren't hard dollars.
Correct.
Those were just pretend dollars?
Correct.
What about the $14,000 in the sales tax that...
That was just one of the tax rareages that we had to come up with. When I took over, I've been at the job three years, we actually owed about $64,000 in back taxes to different state, federal entities. We paid off every one of those taxes. The prior management and the prior boards did not feel it was necessary, for whatever reason, to pay these. One of the biggest bills was the payroll taxes. We had to come up with around $45,000 to pay off those.
And so that $14,000 that Lloyd brought up is no longer there?
No, $14,000 is all paid off.
So right now, you're like $5,500 to the good, or $3,500, whatever you...
$3,500 in the bank as of this morning.
All right. That's what I brought before the board. Supervisor Lingefelter?
Yeah, thank you. Tim, the current lease agreement, can you tell me when that goes through right now?
We have it until the end of this year, 2021. 2020, we did, I worked with the board, we worked with the board in order to get, instead of a single-year lease, a two-year lease. And that is what was approved. 2020 was the first year of that lease. 2020 was a wash. We didn't, it just, nothing. Very minor things. What we did get accomplished, I thought, was the major thing is working with the Board of Health, being able to build plans to have events. That's the reason we're starting to have events right now. Working with Ms. Burley and her team, just being able to set up a safety plan to have events safely, of which we've had about four events. Most of them, one of them didn't make any money, but the other events were for local entities. Livestock show, when we had to cancel the fair, these kids worked all year long to raise their animals. They had nothing to do with them. It was just going to take a loss. So we organized, helped them organize a jackpot livestock show with an auction, which came out well. But we had to set up a system in order to have this livestock show so the kids could do it safely. Set up the way we stall the animals, set up how the kids space themselves, how many people are in the show arena. We did it. It was successful. Now every fairgrounds in the state is using our plan. And if I might add a quick second, in October, we had another livestock show called Sela. In my statement I wrote to you, Sela came in in October 30th and 31st, and we had the largest livestock show in Mojave County history. And this is large animals. This doesn't count chickens, snakes, rabbits, and those things. This is all large animals. We had almost 800 head. The largest livestock show in Mojave County history before that was 1968 with 238 head. So we were able to do it safely. We were able to get these kids to where they could show. And these kids came from all over the state. And they were able to show their animals. They'd been working so hard, they didn't auction, but they had, they were able to show these animals. And that is what, to me, is one of the most important accomplishments we got done in 2020.
Any other questions? Supervisor Cool?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, are we planning to have a fair?
Yes, sir. Yes. We are also planning right now the Home and Garden Show. As I said, working with the county health department, we have devised a set of plans to where we can safely have large events. I explained a while ago, the end of 2020, that we were able to have these events. We had over 10,000 people go through our property. Not one case of COVID originated at our fairgrounds. Nothing, nothing. We work with CDC plans, we work with Denise Burley's team, and we set up a plan. And as I said, these plans are now being used at every fairgrounds across the state. We are leading the way to have events in the entire state of Arizona.
Tim, do you know why we didn't get a report at the...
I was closed.
Pardon me?
We weren't open. It was just me. I mean, I don't have it in October at that part. Didn't have any staff, didn't have anything. It was just me, and I was liable to be riding a tractor chopping tumbleweeds.
But our contract calls for a report.
Yes, sir, it does. And I just did not get it done. That's all on me.
Does the contract provide for any penalty for lack of reporting?
That is up to the Board of Supervisors. There's no penalty. That is up to the Board of Supervisors. There's no penalty spelled out. I could lose my lease, it's true. But we were basically closed at that time.
No other questions? Supervisor Lingefelter?
If you also, if you'd like to have any question, our Chairman of the Board, Jerry McGuire, is here as well. If you have any questions for him on future plans and things what we're working on at the fairgrounds, he'd be more than happy to come up. And I know he's fixing to shoot me for that, but.
Supervisor Lingefelter?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. You know, I don't have a motion fully vetted out yet, but I know since the current lease goes to the end of the calendar year, I'd like to, I think that provides an opportunity with some of the stuff we've heard here, where maybe some of the reports didn't get in on time, when I think there's an opportunity to look at this prior to renewing a lease for subsequent years. Work with Manager Elters, some sort of an ad hoc committee, getting the right people together to look at how best to, are there any process improvements we need? Are there any recommendations for how we should be running this county-owned facility? I don't have anything specific yet, but I'd like to, I'd like to ask the Board to direct Manager Elters to maybe put together some sort of recommendations between now and maybe this summer, in the next six months, or maybe the whole year. But before we go into something more long-term with any agency, I think it's a good idea just to make sure we look at it, make sure that the county's getting a good deal. I'm not sure how I feel about the $25,000. You know, those are taxpayer dollars that are coming from all over the county. And I'm not sure how many people from Havasu or from Bullhead, you know, come up to use the fair. I don't know. I'm still trying to find those, those numbers in that data. But make sure that the county, the taxpayers are getting a good deal, and it's a good experience, so.
Thank you. Has I been looking for a motion to direct the county manager to have staff look at the contract, reports submitted, and come back with a recommendation as regarding continuing the contract?
I would. Either.
Chairman, if I could just jump in real quick, I want to make sure we're clear too.
Oh, right.
Just on one thing, the lease expires the end of March 2022, so it's almost one year from now.
Right, okay.
Mr. Esklin, if the lease is not being followed, then it can be terminated with notice between both parties, correct?
Absolutely, yes. It can be terminated with notice. There's also, I believe, a termination without cause in there as well, so.
Supervisor Lingefelter?
Mr. Chairman?
Let me get the supervisor first. Supervisor Lingefelter?
I'll go ahead and yield to Tim. What do you want to?
Just for, to lie about the $25,000, if they could show a picture, this is what we did in 2020. I've got it up here where everybody else could see. That's your new entrance way for Mojave County Fairgrounds, permanent structure. It enhances the, it makes the entrance way the entrance way. Where it used to be when I first came, a 1968 trailer house, right there when you entered, that is now what you see when you come into the fairgrounds. That is the kind of things that we use the county money for. We were, it went from, when I came on, they, the county gave them money, they just put it in general funds and spent it how they want to with no reporting. When, the first time I was in front of this board, me and Chairman Johnson had a conversation about that. This now, now what we do is we do capital expenditures. We do a capex. We build something. That's what we use that money for, to enhance the value of that county property. We're no longer just leasing it and just using it up. We are enhancing the value of it. This is 2020's project. It was also using a source of volunteers. Another project that we got completed for the rodeo arena that is a new announcer's booth, working with volunteers, working with donations, we were able to put that up. The first year I was there, we tore down that 1968 trailer house and cleaned up that area so people, when they came in, saw something that was nicer than when they came in. In 20, that was in 2000, that was 2018, 2019, we completely reestablished the footing of the rodeo arena. We hauled in and worked with volunteers, and we spent over $30,000 to revamp that rodeo arena. And we were awarded the most improved rodeo arena by the Professional Rodeo Cowboys Association in the southwestern part of the United States. That is what we're using those taxpayer dollars for.
Mr. Lingefelter, Supervisor Lingefelter, my objection to that in the past has been, we have an association that we've basically given our county fair to, and it seems like there should be tons of money being generated there that would handle all those expenses and be done without taxpayer dollars. It seems to me that should be a great moneymaker, but that's just a disagreement. Did you have something else, Supervisor Lingefelter?
Yeah, I mean, as part of my research on this item, I did go on to the Fairgrounds Association website just to see what sort of events they were having. I know that Mojave County, we allow gatherings now. We're going into March. I didn't see any sort of like St. Patrick's Day thing or any, there seems to be more opportunities to do more events that could bring in some more revenues, in my opinion. I might be wrong.
Well, I agree.
And also, you know, I'm not sure how much motorsports-related activity, I mean, if you're going to have a county fairgrounds, I think it needs to have something for everybody. And I think the fair, obviously, is for everybody. But there's a lot of people in Mojave County that love motorsports. And, you know, if our-
I'm glad you brought that up.
For our Fairgrounds Association, we have to have a facility that, you know, long-term solution is going to be able to accommodate everybody, which is kind of what brings me back to what I was thinking. You know, if we have a year or thereabouts, to work with Sam, maybe his parks people, to talk about, you know, how best do we partner, or do we contract something out, or do we do it internal? I think it's, it's fair to assess it in the last year of a lease agreement between partners, to make sure that we're going to be doing things.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would be interested in hearing what the fair has planned going forward from Mr. McGuire.
You have plans moving forward, Mr. Woods?
Yes, sir. As of right now. Our biggest thing that's going to happen here this month, the 10th, is we're having our second round of COVID vaccinations. Going to be drive-through right there at the fairgrounds. We've done one round already, where we did vaccinated 525. This is the community stuff I'm talking about right, right there. In April, we've got Arizona Junior Rodeo, and that's 9th and 11th after, the weekend after Easter. Arizona Junior Rodeo is kids from all over the state of Arizona, 18 or under that are trying to get to the state finals. Usually, we have anywhere from 800 to 1,000 contestants. We don't have many general public come in. Mostly, that's friends and family that come in to watch these kids compete. The last one they had in 2019, we had over 2,600 people stay in Kingman and the area for three days. Also, we've got the Home and Garden Show coming up, the 22nd through the 25th. May, we've got Kingman Junior Rodeo. In May also, we've got BMX Spring Desert Nationals that were canceled in Phoenix, that will be held at our BMXa Park, that will be running anywhere from 1,500 or more contestants. Figured these are kids, mom and dad, grandparents come to watch them, so you're talking around 3,000 to 3,500 people there for three days. Again, those kind of things. We've got circus planned. We've got, and I'm glad you brought up motorsports, working with Brian Davinsky, who puts on the street drags in Kingman. In October, we're working on a tractor pull, I'm sorry, monster truck rally going on here in the next month. Also been talking to a gentleman about doing a motocross thing, using motocross, redesigning that motocross track that's already there, redesigning that. He'll work on it on a partnership or a lease basis where he leases the property. Then 2020, before we were closed down, every single weekend had an event. All of them, all year long. And we had to cancel, repay, everything because it was just closed. And that's the reason the importance of working with the Board of Health, or the Health Department, getting plans up to have events safely. That way the, the community has confidence to show up. If you don't have that, you're not going to have people show up. And so they have to have confidence to show up.
Tim, I've got a question, follow-up. The city of Kingman, I believe, has an ordinance prohibiting top fuel vehicles, and there may be some things related to noise since it's surrounded by residences.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't that prohibit some of the motorsport stuff? Or like the monster truck thing, are you allowed to do that?
The monster truck thing, because we're going to set it up, and it's not going to happen in the rodeo arena because it does too much damage to the new service. But we do have another arena, and we're able to put up the bleachers actually as a noise ordinance. And the city's worked with us before when we did have, before I came on, when they did have some monster trucks rallies out there, and there has not been a problem. And they also waived when Route 66 drag races came on. Y'all worked with them, even though there was a noise type situation there, correct?
Before my time on city council.
I don't know. This was just October of 2019, when they had the street drags on Route 66.
Oh, right. That was on 66, right? Not in the fairgrounds. Okay, yeah, that's right.
But it's two blocks over. But we haven't had any problem with noise ordinances or anything for anything we did, even the fireworks.
Great. Mr. Chairman, I don't have a motion today, but I would probably bring an item to a future council.
All right. Supervisor Gould?
Board meeting, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Lingefelter, what they have, Kingman has a ban on top, is it the particular fuel?
They have an ordinance prohibiting something called top fuel vehicles, which, drag racing, things like that, to happen at the fairgrounds. Yes. I don't remember when that went in. I think it was 2010 or before.
Interesting.
Yeah, but that, the local ordinances, local rules prohibit a lot of the motorsport stuff from occurring at the current facility.
Right.
Because of the residential, surrounding residential properties.
Sure. And I understand that. I was just curious how they delineated top fuel.
I, I don't know what they're doing about top fuel vehicles now. I think they have to go into an unincorporated area to do those. Or, you know, the commercial street, Hedy Devine, Route 66, I know that the city did accommodate the street drags, and they did a street drags event a couple of years ago, so.
Sure. So I guess the discussion is, do we want to move, do we want to move a motion that would allow the staff to take a look at this?
Yes.
Or do we want to wait and put it together later? I think staff's going to have to look at it anyway to put together the, what Supervisor Lingefelter wants to look at.
And also the reports that we should be getting copies of, bringing those up to date.
Right. I'll make that motion. Mr. Chairman, my move that we direct staff to look into and bring back to the Board within 30 days, any documentation or recommendations related to the 2020 lease agreement signed with the Mojave County Fairgrounds Association, to determine if Mojave County has received the fiscal year '21 profit and loss report that was due in October of 2020, and also to determine if the county has received the July 2020 and January 2021 semi-annual report on operations and activities being conducted at the fairgrounds per the lease agreement.
Second.
I'll second that.
Motion and second for discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 38, I placed this on, timeline was short, I put it all in backup for Congressman Gosar wanting a letter from the Board. So I'm looking for a ratification of the letter I wrote.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Congressman Gosar for keeping up on this. It's going to be coming fast and furious now. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion and second for the discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 39, update from our County Health Director. Ms. Burley?
Morning, Chairman Johnson, members of the Board. Do my directional piece here. I know that IT will yell at me if not. So I'll start off, as I usually do, with the numbers. As of February 26th, there have been a total of 19,002 COVID-19 cases in the county to date. 12,345 of those cases have recovered. We have had 551 deaths. 1,849 people have been hospitalized at some point during their illness. We have, our average age of cases is 47.7, average age of deaths is 75.6, and our case fatality rate is 2.9 percent. In our hospital update, just looking at our, our trends for the past week, our COVID-positive ED patients have shown a slight uptick compared to the last, the prior week. We'll continue to monitor that situation, but that may have just been a transient event and not, not a trend. Two hospitals currently report immediate or impending staff shortages, so we continue to see that as an issue for some of the hospitals. One hospital is on cautionary diversion status due to medical surge and telemetry availability. Mojave County has averaged 77% full ICU in the last week, with 38 percentage, 38% of those patients being COVID-positive. Arizona, for comparison sake, shows 86% full ICUs with 24% COVID-positive patients. Mojave County averaged 90%, 95% total inpatient occupancy with 8% COVID-positive. Arizona shows 88% full inpatient beds with 15% COVID-positive. Any questions on the hospital report? All right. As you know, there have been multivariant, multiple variants of the virus that causes COVID-19 documented in the U.S. and globally. The United Kingdom variant, known as B.1.1.7, has been identified in the U.S. and Arizona with 14 identified cases at this point. However, no cases have been identified yet in Mojave County of that particular variant. The South African variant, known as B.1.351, has been identified in the U.S., but also not in Arizona yet. And then the Brazilian variant, known as P.1, has been found in very few states to date. And I don't believe we've had any cases here in Arizona. So they'll continue to do the genetic sequencing to determine the variants within our state. And once we have that information, we'll certainly share that with you if there are some additional pieces of information available. As you know, vaccine manufacturers are continuing to research the effectiveness of current vaccines against these new variants. So I imagine in the, in the coming weeks and months, we'll have more information about the effectiveness of those vaccines against each one of those. And we'll share that information as it becomes available. Any questions on variants?
I have a question.
Supervisor Angus?
So these variants, are they stronger? Are they more lethal?
Supervisor Angus, it's a great question. And at this point, they are still researching that piece as well, whether or not-
So they wouldn't be covered by the vaccine?
They may be covered by the vaccine. I think that's the best way we can describe it at this point. Some have estimated that some of these new variants are more transmissible than others. I've seen a variety of reports all across the media about whether or not they're more deadly, whether or not they're less deadly, and so on. I think there's still a lot to be learned about these variants. And until we have more concrete information, I think it would be wrong to speculate.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, I believe, I read something about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and they tested it differently than the other vaccines were tested. And I believe they actually tested their vaccine on the Brazilian and the South African variant. And their effectiveness rate was based on that also, rather than the, I don't know, what are you, the Wuhan flu that were, that they're testing the other, others on. But that's somewhat, it's interesting, though, that they have a different effectiveness rate, and they tested it differently. So I don't know how on earth that provides any kind of a standard. standard for effectiveness, but I thought I would share that.
Right, right. And thank you, Supervisor Gould, because I do, I think there's so much more to be learned. And some of this has to do with the consistency and how research is conducted, and doing things the same way so that you can compare apples to apples and so on. So, I do think there is, there's a lot to be learned, as I mentioned, and we'll, we'll have more information, I'm sure, in coming weeks and months on these particular variants.
Supervisor Angus.
So, what the reports I'm seeing is that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is only 66 percent effective, which I, I'm not a doctor, but that doesn't sound too good.
It's, it's-
Is that because of their doing it on these variants?
No, Supervisor Angus, it's not specific to that. I think their, their measurement is against moderate to severe illness, and so, it is 66.7 percent effective against severe and moderate illness, or, yeah, from the disease. The other thing is that J&amp;J is also being researched with a second dose. So, this is a side research event that's going on with Johnson &amp; Johnson to determine if two doses becomes more effective and reaches that 95 percent efficacy rate at that rate. At this point, being that it is one dose, it really, you have to be strategic, I guess, in the population that you're going to use it for. And with that said, the vaccine being one dose, you might use it, for example, with populations where it's difficult for that individual to come back for a second dose. So, you might consider, for example, the jail population as being one. I just spoke with the jail commander, Mr. Bischoff, and he had mentioned that the average stay for someone in the jail is about 20 and a half days. Well, with the Moderna vaccine being a 28-day cycle, you can see that if we were to give a one-dose at a jail setting, you would then effectively vaccinate a good portion of people in a congregate setting. And while you may not have perfect results because of the efficacy, you would certainly create a very strong preventive structure in place for those particular people. So, the other important factor is that the Johnson &amp; Johnson is 100 percent effective against death, and nearly so, keeping people out of the ICU. So, when we're considering hospitalizations, and really, the goal of some of these vaccines, all of these vaccines actually, is to reduce severe cases and reduce death and disability as a result of the cases. So, the, all three vaccines meet that goal as a minimum level. So, I think, moving forward, you will see a great deal of improvements as we continue to learn more about the disease itself and the vaccine's capabilities. Anything else on Johnson &amp; Johnson? Okay. All right. So, we'll get to the topic everybody is probably most interested in, which is vaccine. So, Mojave County is open to all 1A and 1B protective services occupations, 65 years and older educators and childcare workers. Staff have been working diligently to secure additional vaccine for Mojave County. This work has included, of course, many discussions with the Arizona Department of Health Services, with Senator, or, I'm sorry, Congressman Gosar's office and Senator Sinema's office. So, we have been working through all directions, really, to try to secure more vaccine for our county and increase that amount and that allocation. As a result, the county will receive, of those efforts, the county will receive 8,000 doses this week, an increase of 5,000 from previous weeks, and we will continue to advocate for more. With the addition of the 8,000 doses arriving this week, Mojave County will have received a total of 39,700 doses. Again, we'll continue to work with all of our resources to try to get more vaccine into our county. That'll be our biggest, our biggest push. To date, 3,000, this is actually as of the end of the day yesterday, 30,119 vaccines, or 95 percent of the inventory that has been received by the county or in the county, have been administered in Mojave County. And of those, 9,168 people have received both doses. So, they've been fully vaccinated. Any questions on vaccine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, so, Embry is back in the program?
Correct. Embry will receive an allocation this week of vaccine for each of their three sites in Mojave County.
And they've got their paperwork situation squared away.
That is correct. Correct. But we will be monitoring, and we do monitor, all of these providers carefully. We do receive reports on how much they've been allocated, how much has been administered, and how much has been reported. And so, we do have that information provided to us from ADHS twice a week, and we monitor that information to ensure that those records are being entered appropriately and timely.
And there seems to be an issue getting people their second dose also. They can't get an appointment, or in Embry's case, that Embry had appointments that had no, that had no vaccine to administer.
Correct.
Um, I don't know what we can do to streamline this process.
We are working with the providers to offer second-dose appointments specifically, and we have noticed that that has been something that they've, they've added to their services so that they ensure that there are appointments for those individuals. Ultimately, when you had 3,000 vaccinations, vaccine doses coming in the door, that's just not enough. I mean, you're gonna have people fighting for first doses and second doses. And it's, it's a really tough system to work with, and I think we were trying to really advocate for getting shots in arms, right? We had to get that inventory percentage of vaccine used higher, which means, at that point, are you really pushing for second doses? Are you pushing for getting vaccine in arms, really with getting ADHS feedback that you're gonna continue to get more vaccine? And so, you'll be able to meet first and second-dose requirements.
And it didn't seem like the public understood that we don't have the freedom to run our program any way that we choose. You know, that we have, there's other people that we're answerable to, and it, because the vaccine comes from the federal government, we have to answer to the federal government, the state government.
Correct.
You know, we don't have total freedom to do whatever we want to do, and we also are using private providers, so that we, we've only got, we've got limits on that also.
We do.
So, there seems to be a misperception in the public that, that we're in charge, and we can do anything that we want to do, and that's just not true.
It is not. It is not. We, we have the responsibility of allocating vaccine to the almost 40 providers in our county, and trying to balance out their needs of first and second doses with the needs of the communities, and making sure that we're, again, distributing the vaccine equitably among the communities and the regions in our county. You know, we rely very heavily on them to meet the governor's executive order requirements around reporting, because that becomes their responsibility. If they take on the responsibility of administering vaccine, they also take on the responsibility of reporting that vaccine. That is their job. So, their commitment to that process is to follow through with all of that and meet those requirements.
It, it seemed like the constituents that I had contact with thought that this was just some bogus government paperwork issue, and that we were putting paperwork above vaccination. We had no vaccine, anyway, to administer.
Correct.
But the long-run problem is if we don't, if we don't deal with that paperwork issue, then we're gonna get reduced amount of vaccine, which would put us in a worse boat, too.
Correct.
So, we're receiving pressure from both sides.
Exactly, Supervisor Gould. And to allow, to have allowed the program to continue would have just continued to bury, you know, and increase the number of unreported vaccines administered. And that just, you know, to allow that program to, that problem to grow would have presented additional issues further on. And I think the public identified that very specifically when they noticed that if you looked at the ADHS website, the, the number of vaccines administered wasn't matching what we were reporting, because we were asking directly from the providers what they actually administered. So, we knew that number. But ADHS is pulling from an ACIS database, and that ACIS database is where they're getting that information. That's where providers are reporting. So, when you see a discrepancy, it's generally a reporting lag of some sort. And, you know, when you've got a provider, a larger provider who's behind in that process, that can add up.
It was interesting, because some of the, many of the people that were complaining were complaining about us pressing, pushing the paperwork issue, and then also complaining about our numbers not matching.
Yes.
So, you know, it was somewhat contradictory, but, go ahead and yield.
Anyone else have any questions? Supervisor Langenfeldter.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Good morning, Director Burley. How are you?
Good morning. I'm well, thank you.
Good. I'm gonna pivot to schools.
Certainly.
You sent me a link from the CDC recently, and upon reading it, it looked as though the CDC had amended its schools guidance related to surgical masks. Could you explain that a little bit?
Supervisor Lingamfilter, I haven't had an opportunity honest to do a lot of research about the schools, and I apologize for that. We will continue to use CDC guidance, as will ADHS. They will ensure that the guidance that, that they have developed for schools within the state of Arizona, that that guidance also meets CDC guidelines. So, I think you will expect that to align very closely.
Good. Upon reading it, it looked as though, almost, that the CDC was no longer recommending schoolchildren in our schools to wear those surgical masks. So, I look forward to receiving more information on that. And just from a public health perspective, do you think there's any reason why our youth should be wearing masks while playing sports, especially outdoors?
I actually think the AIA is looking at reconsidering their status and their statement on that. You know, I think in some sports, I, I mean, I play soccer. I would find that to be a challenge to do.
Yeah. Well, I certainly appreciate your ongoing guidance and your information. Wondering that if, in subsequent meetings, you might add a school section. I'm not saying there is any confusion out there with the school boards, but if you were to say it at the podium, you know, this is kind of what the CDC and the state are saying, was related to schools and our schoolchildren, that would be greatly appreciated to keep everybody on the same page. Thank you.
Supervisor Lingamfilter, consider it done.
Anyone else? Do you have anything else, Ms. Burley?
Uh, yes, actually, very quickly, if I could, please. We have some upcoming events I want to make sure that the public is aware of and the board is aware of. I believe I've shared that Safeway and the Mojave County Department of Health are collaborating on events in Bullhead City, Kingman, and Lake Havasu. The first event will be this Wednesday at the Anderson Field House. And this is actually a four-week second-dose event. So, if you remember, we held a, conducted an event with Safeway, actually, leading that effort about four weeks ago. And so, this is our four-week out cycle. And what they have, this will be on Wednesday, from 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock. There will be 500 appointments. 300 and 20 will be second-dose appointments, and 180 first-dose appointments. It'll be a drive-through event at the Anderson Field House, and we do have a link, I believe, on our webpage. And we are working with the communications director to get more information out about that specific event. They are working on a Kingman event at the Mojave County Fairgrounds again, and we're very appreciative of the use of those fairgrounds, as they really, it provides a great venue for us to, to host such an event. And that, again, they're looking at the hours. We'll provide more information once we have some very solid information to share with the board and the public. And then, the following week, on the 17th, we're working on an event in Lake Havasu, which will be a first. The Kingman event, again, will be second dose, because that'll be a four-week cycle again. But the Lake Havasu event will be our first opportunity there, and we will, again, be working with the Safeway.
Is that all, Ms. Burley? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, where was the Lake Havasu event planned?
Yeah, we're actually still working on the location piece of it for you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I just got a notice, you know, my office has been helping people, and so, my assistant said that the people who got their first dose were told they did not need an appointment to come back, to come back at the same time. Do you know anything about that?
I do not.
At the field house?
So, we will check into that, yes.
Okay.
Is that all, Ms. Burley?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson, Chairman Johnson.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.